November, November the 24th to order. If you please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Stand and please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I appreciate everyone came out this evening and. And a couple of comments, the first found out earlier today and the city manager may want to add more to this, but that property owners, the reassessment should be mailed out around the first of the month, the reassessing property this year. And when you get that bill, of course, is in the past. If you want to have a comment or want to have a hearing about that, you can appeal it. But they said this year, due to COVID, there will not be conducting face-to-face hearings. Appeals will be done email, fax, or in writing. And all of that information should be on that notice when you receive that. So just make people aware, they may be receiving that in the coming weeks before we meet again. But there is a process there if you disagree to appeal. The other thing is, you know, as we enter into Thanksgiving and the winter, just again to remind everyone to be safe, to wear a mask when you can, social distance when you can, wash your hands. If you feel sick, stay home, don't be out if you don't have to. As cases are rising, as people are moving about for both Thanksgiving and the holiday seasons, and moving more indoors as the winter gets cold, because we want to try our best to keep our community safe, to keep our businesses open, and to keep the schools open. So I encourage everyone to follow that guidance. Anybody else have any comments? Item B, city manager?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, you know, it's a Thanksgiving holiday weekend, everybody wants to be friends, around friends and family this weekend, but that doesn't mean that, while we may be on vacation, it doesn't mean that COVID is on vacation and we have to still stay vigilant in making sure that we are physically distancing from one another and wearing masks during the holiday season. I know it's not easy because we're all used to being around our families during the holidays. So please, please be careful over the holiday weekend. Think of yourself, think of your families, think of your coworkers when you're in a gathering with people and wear a mask and physically distance as much as possible.
Okay. All right, item C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. I don't think anyone had signed up, but if anyone has anything they'd like to speak to, step forward. Yeah, we saw that, Ms. Kerr. Yeah, wait, when the item comes up. Yeah, you can speak then, so. Thank you. All right, so we'll move to item D, adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda with the exception of item three, the conversion to four-way stop, which we would postpone indefinitely.
Second.
Okay. She wants to know what the reason is to postpone it?
Oh, what the, what the reasoning to postpone it?
Yeah.
Well, as, I'm the council representative on the Transportation Commission, and I feel like we need probably to take some more time to think about it before we make a decision on something like this. Because it would change, you know, it's a significant change, I think, in my mind to, to the traffic situation downtown. So I think we need to take some more time before we decide to take out the light or put in a stop sign or something.
At the last meeting, our Public Works Director Wallace McCullough, who's sitting over here, he was out. And it was an unscheduled absence. He didn't intend to be out that day, but, so that's why we had to postpone it last time. And I think over the past couple of weeks, councils had an opportunity to consider what to do, and they have chosen to really just take more time to look at whether or not this needs to be done. Mr. Hartley, if you'd want to let her speak to it right now.
Yeah, if you, if you would like to speak, Ms. Kerr, go ahead, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I mean, you can, you can. No, no, and I appreciate, yeah, please, I appreciate you coming out to speak and we'll give you an opportunity.
Last time, this time, just for that.
Okay.
It was postponed last time, and I was told the other reason, and I had no idea it was going to be postponed again.
And postponing it means that they're not going to, they're not going to take down the red light, the red lights want to remain.
Now what?
By postponing this agenda item, they will not be taking down the red light, the red light will stay at that intersection.
Forever?
Well, for the foreseeable future.
For how long?
Well, it's up to VDOT funding. Right now, VDOT was going to fund the removal of that red light, and now at this point, since we're going to tell them that we're leaving the red light up, they may choose not to fund the removal of that red light.
But if they do fund it, do I need to speak to it if they're, because they did?
They will not be funding it anytime in the foreseeable future.
So it's just a new item?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, Nancy didn't even know that, and she spoke to someone on the phone this afternoon.
And this decision was made late this afternoon.
Okay. But I do want to be here if that changes, because we, the Curb Oswald Building, half of it, we actually sold half of it years ago, and it directly impacts us. Even though I sold my business, I still own half the building, so it directly impacts everything.
Right, but as of right now, everything's going to be the status quo, and I would think it'll be that way at least for another two years, Wallace, at least.
Yeah, and it depends on if the bridge gets removed or is replaced, we're going to have to invest in that.
Right.
Well, it's a big deal for us, because our customers kind of go in and this type thing. And anybody who rent part of it, the insurance office, sales managers, and all those.
And I'd be glad to speak to you about that.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know if there's any points to that, because we've been doing this for years, just to know that I'm going to come together with the ten lines of traffic and the fact that we tried to walk up the pipeline, we just got the two companies that have those problems. It's very dangerous, very dangerous, even, and there was bad traffic last week, almost a few, because it had the fire truck and everything.
Ms. Kerr? So, I mean, so you don't want to make any comment right now? Or, I mean, if you, if you want to, if you want to, I'm more than, I don't, well, I'd agree.
I don't know if there's any point.
Probably isn't really point.
Pardon?
I would agree, I mean, if we're postponing this indefinitely.
For two years, yeah, well, that's good, because.
And I will make note and ask the city manager that if, if and when this does come back on the agenda, to make sure that you're aware that it's being discussed in front of council.
I think it would be changed back quickly after several people were killed on that corner, because people don't even stop for the light, much less a stop sign.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the change of postponing indefinitely, item number three, in a second.
Yes.
Of Mr. Pahr. Okay, Clerk Colerole.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Okay. Move to item number one, public hearing on amendment to city ordinance section 66-41 holidays. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll have the staff report.
Counsel, this is an amendment to our current holiday ordinance in regards to the holidays that are available to city employees. Over the past three and a half years, it always appears that there's an issue, a conflict in state holiday schedule as compared to the city holiday schedule. I think it would be best for everybody involved if it just followed the state holiday schedule. That way, we can always go to the Department of Human Resources Management page for the Commonwealth of Virginia and see what the holidays are. The only item I would suggest is removing the language for, on item A, J, and K, removing the fourth Thursday in November and the fourth Friday in November.
That's because it's covered by the Thanksgiving holiday?
Do what now?
That's because it's already covered by the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay. At this time, let's see, Mr. Pollard, you had signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Mr. Eads has already addressed one of my concerns, and that is the reference to the fourth Friday in November, because one year and seven, the day after Thanksgiving is the fifth Friday. I would also note, and I sent these by email to Mr. Eads later this afternoon.
And I forwarded those to council as well.
There are two paragraph Bs. The list includes H, Election Day, but it doesn't allow for employees, other than shift employees in Fire and the Police Departments, to have any flexibility. Since there are no allowances for such flexibility, there are no allowances, for example, for the employees of the registrar's office to work on Election Day. I would, my recommendation, sure, you could consider compromise solutions, but my recommendation would simply to be, to allow all departments flexibility for both hourly and salary employees to take an alternate day when the needs of the department so dictate. I don't know that there's a need to only give flexibility to police and fire. Paragraph C, what's currently paragraph C, anyway, uses the terms during and regular vacation leave without defining those terms. As worded, it would indicate that if a person takes off the day after Christmas, because they traveled out of town for the holiday, that they may no longer get paid for either Christmas Day or Christmas Eve. Again, you could work out various compromise solutions. My recommendation would simply be that if a, that a person would only not get paid for the holiday if they have an unexcused absence the day before or the day after, while not being paid twice for the same day. It should be either a vacation day or a holiday, and not both. Other than that, I would think the people and their supervisors should have discretion on whether or not they can take a holiday or a vacation day adjacent to holiday. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pollard was the only one that signed up, but if there's anyone else that would like to speak to this item, they can. All right. Well, no further comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to item number two, amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan in response to the COVID-19 pandemic fairground, CDBG-CV. Say that three times fast.
Councilman. The City of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The entitlement monies must be spent on projects that principally benefit low to moderate-income persons and families. Each year, the city develops an annual action plan to determine how the funding will be allocated, which is approved by city council. On September 11th, 2020, HUD allocated the City of Bristol an additional $116,003 in CDBG-CV, or its CARES Act funding, in the third round. Now, we did, we received some in the first round, but we didn't receive any additional monies in the second round, so we received this in the third round. And this is funding to prevent, prepare, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the public service cap of 15% has been lifted on these funds, as well as any other 2019 funds that will be used to address COVID-19. So tonight, staff is seeking council approval to amend, re-amend, again, the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan by adding $116,003 in CDBG-CV funding. Activities include providing resources to a local public service agency to distribute financial assistance to low to moderate income families who have experienced financial hardship due to the coronavirus. This financial assistance will provide funding for past due utility payments and food vouchers. The city may request up to 20% of these funds for administration. Staff is suggesting or requesting that only 10% be used for administration and the rest be made available for additional direct financial assistance to the LMI. So I kind of broke it down and got a little bit more specific up here. So basically, what I'm going to try to explain to you is how we're going to use these funds. So we've been, we've been in talks with United Way, and they have agreed to administer these funds on behalf of both cities to provide past due utility assistance and food vouchers to those families impacted by COVID-19. The City of Bristol, Tennessee, also received third round CDBG-CV funding, and they are going to use their funds for the same purpose, and those will be administered by United Way of Bristol as well. United Way already has experience in providing financial resources to those in need, and they already have an application process in place. To get a little bit more specific for you, monies from Bristol, Virginia will go to Bristol, Virginia residents only. Monies from the city, the CDBG funds, will be dispersed to United Way in increments as needed to cover the requests. United Way will provide the city with all documentation required for CDBG program, such as the completed applications and proof of income. Utility payments will be made directly to utility companies. No funds will be provided directly to family members. Eligible utilities include electric, water, gas, oil, basically those that are meeting the basic needs. Does not include internet, phone service, cable, et cetera, although we've thought about internet a little bit more, and if it's not covered elsewhere, we may cover it if a family member works from home, or they have children or a child that attends school. Also, utility funds may be used to cover up to three months of overdue utility payments, and total payments will not exceed $1,000. We also want to include food vouchers right now, because a lot of these same families, you know, are having food instability. And this is something United Way already does, they're used to using the, I think they typically use Food City food vouchers. So a family of four can receive up to $100 in food vouchers, a family of five or more $150. This is a max per month for up to three months. And food vouchers cannot be used for alcohol or tobacco products.
Or lottery.
Or the lottery. Thank you. Each family can receive a maximum grand amount of $1,500 total through this program. Up to 10% of the CDBG-CV funds allocated to United Way may be used to pay for additional staffing capacity to carry out all application requests, including proper documentation and follow-up. This will be based on a reimbursement. It doesn't mean that they're going to be spending all the money that they are allowed to, and it won't be for current staff, it'll be for any staffing capacity that they need to add in order to handle these different, additional application requests. So this is sort of what it looks like. Total CDBG-CV funding received $116,003. 20% is allowed for admin for the City of Bristol, up to $23,260. But this is where we suggest we're, we're only going to use 10% for our administration, and go ahead and use the remaining 10% to benefit residents. So the City of Bristol will be only taking $11,630 for its administration. United Way of Virginia, Tennessee, will have $104,402 to provide, to provide the vouchers, the food vouchers and the utility assistance. And then United Way can use up to $10,440 for administering the program. So with funding from CDBG-CV three round, the City of Bristol will benefit at a minimum 65 LMI residents in the city. Now, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I also have Lisa Kofor here with us today from the United Way, in case you want to address any questions to her.
Any questions in council?
I would just like to thank you, as usual, for the work that you, you do putting this together. I know you put a lot of hard work into this and getting everything in order, and the CDBG stuff is not easy to handle, so you do a very good job, so.
Not this year.
Yeah, especially not this year, but I appreciate it, we all appreciate it.
I had a couple of questions. Talked about utility bills, you pay up to three months overdue. Would that also, if somebody, if they got past due and had to reconnect, would you pay for that?
I believe we're going to include reconnection fees with that.
I see Lisa shaking her head behind you, so.
Do you absolutely have to do, because if we don't, then they're still going to be trying to figure out how do you, you know, how to find this dollar? And that's what prospective action does, too. The other thing that Ellen was talking about, too, is this is going to be Salvation Army right now, for Help Your Neighbor dollars. They can get help through that program for Bristol, Tennessee residents, we don't have it for Bristol, Virginia. So this is, you know, an amazing opportunity for our Bristol, Virginia residents. But now, they go to Bristol Faith in Action once every six months if they need help. And then for Bristol, Virginia, that's really the only option they've got. So this will give them another opportunity to be able to have help. And you all know, you know, the folks that we're helping right now are folks who have not had asked for help before. You know, many of them are just really struggling because of COVID and what's happened. So this, you know, if you've lost your job, or your hours are cut back, or your family's been sick and you've been in the hospital, you know, to get help one month isn't always what you need. Sometimes you need, you know, another month to help. So, you know, it's just going to be amazing for the city, for the citizens of Bristol, Virginia to have this opportunity.
I had another question regarding the timeline for this. I know, I think in the first round of these COVID funds through CDGB, they were extended, I think, through the end of next calendar year, or the, it was, I know it was longer than the regular CARES Act money.
Yeah, they actually were extended quite a bit. Now, the contracts I did for the first round of CV funding, the contracts I made ended, they're ending June 30th of next year. However, if needed, they could be extended beyond that. But I was trying to go ahead and get everybody to spend, you know, their money and, and get there, because it's based on reimbursements.
So for this, how long, I mean, this would be basically the next, through the spring, probably not much beyond?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I imagine it's going to go fast. But, but yeah, there's, there's, these timelines are pretty, pretty long. And I think it's after March, anytime after March 1st, that they've experienced any of these expenses, that they can get assistance.
Well, Councilman Osborne, I appreciate both of y'all for doing this. I know there's a lot of people, this will help benefit, and to your point about utilities, I've had people ask me, and I've tried to point them in the direction of other agencies I know might have funds available, like Faith in Action, or People Inc., or something like that. So it's good to know if people have questions, where we can direct them to get assistance.
Well, the, the other thing, too, is these have to be last resort funds, you know, the CDBG, they, they want them to be, you know, after everything else is exhausted, other funding sources. And that's another good reason for United Way, because they know that where these people have gone to get this assistance already. And so I think it's going to be a good partnership.
Good. Okay, public comment, nobody had signed up to speak on it. Does anybody have any more questions of Ms. Holden? Nobody had signed up to speak, so if anyone has a comment. If not, what's the closure of council?
I move to approve the item.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second? Have any discussion? All right, no discussion. Clerk Colerole?
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll skip over item number three, since we postponed that indefinitely, move to item number four, resolution approving a subdivision, Meadows Point. Ms. Morgan?
Mayor and council members, this is actually phase three of Meadows Point, and it's basically involving this track outline. It is involving this large, three and a half acre residue track, is what I've been calling it, because it really is the rest of the subdivision that originally was to be developed. But the developer has come to us and said, it's just going to be too expensive because of the terrain, and, but he would like to get one more lot at the end of Pebble Drive. So I just wanted to show you this overview off of Valley Drive, this is Harvest Road, and this piece of property lays behind the houses on Harvest Road. So taking that 3.5 acres, it would divide into one, just less than one acre lot, 24, and then the rest of the remainder is 2.62. And you can see on the map there, the terrain, the contours, and it's wooded and fairly rough property there. So, let's see if I can get the pointer. This is the 24, lot 24 on this side here, accessed by way of this stubbed-out Pebble Drive. The Planning Commission at its meeting in October granted a variance to allow for just the 40-foot frontage along the property line here at the end of the Pebble Drive, rather than the required 50-foot width or frontage of a lot. They also approved the preliminary plat and the final plat. And based on other subdivision standards in our code, the developer would have to upgrade the remainder of Pebble Drive, there's about 40 or 50 feet that never got finished, I guess, that would have to be done before he could record this lot. And so Lot 24 is the one that probably is, is a buildable lot, and he has a prospective buyer for it. Just to give you a quick, couple pictures. This is that, that Pebble Drive, and where it's not finished, it would need to be finished another, I think it's almost 50 feet. That's understood by the developer, and he would have to either do that before we finish the final signing of the plat, or put up a bond for that. So, and their agenda packet is, is you all saw, your resolution to approve this division of this 3.5 into two tracks.
Any questions? Ms. Morgan?
So Lot 25 would just remain a wooded, because it's basically unusable, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, can't, I can't actually say that, it could, it could be a lot. Well, I mean, can't, I can't actually say that. It could, it could be a lot if somebody wanted to spend a lot of money.
But it, it has ingress from the other side.
It has egress from the other side. Yeah.
So if they were to develop it, this wouldn't prevent access to that?
And two years ago, back to the plat there, two years ago, the, those lots that front on Harvest Drive, you can see how long they are. Those were to be the lots off the Pebble Drive and went from end to end. But the, those were sold to the adjoining property owners with the frontage. So it's even less likely that it would even be cost effective that someone would go in there and put a road and divide a little bit of left property there, so. Any other questions I can answer?
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Public comment, again, no one had signed up for this item, but if anyone would like to speak, we're more than happy to let them. All right, hearing none, we'll move to reading of the resolution.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia approving the final plat number 12 hyphen 2020 for Meadows Point, Phase Three, Lots 24 and 25. The City Council finds that whereas the subdivision plat for Meadows Point subdivision, Phase Three, has been properly submitted to the city and reviewed by city staff, and whereas the Planning Commission met on November 16th, 2020 and approved the final plat, and whereas Section 50 hyphen 270 requires that the final plat of the subdivision be approved and certified by City Council before it can be recorded, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, the council approves and certifies the final plat number 12 hyphen 2020 for Meadows Point subdivision, Phase Three subdivision, as attached in Exhibit A, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on November 24th, 2020.
What is the pleasure of council?
A move for approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Osborne, second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
To item number five, presentation from the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. Ms. Ross?
Is it okay if I take my mask off to present? Do you care?
I think that would be fine. I mean, you're within six feet away.
I feel like I'm far enough away that I'll be okay.
Yeah, I think everybody can hear you better.
To begin with, I would like to thank the city manager, our mayor and city council for allowing me to present and update an overview of the Birthplace of Country Music and how the COVID-19 pandemic has affected our three branches. These are the items that I'm going to be talking about tonight, and I'm going to start with Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion update. The impact of canceling the 20th anniversary of the Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion festival ran deep in our organization. Expenses for the festival happen 12 months out of the year. Planning, booking artists and all the different things that go into producing the festival happens year round. The Birthplace of Country Music had to determine how to handle the ticket refunds and deferrals or how to handle any of those. Local businesses in our downtown were also impacted by this because they were not going to see the influx of revenue that they usually get that helped make them make it through the cold winter months. Businesses outside of downtown were affected also when you think about the hotels not getting that. And when you put all of this together, it really impacts the tax revenue coming to the city. Our community was very supportive during this time in making of our decision, and we worked really hard on trying to have it, but we just couldn't. And while they understood, it did affect some of the community morale. You take it to the next one, Jean? Okay. We gave our advanced ticket purchasers three options when dealing with tickets that had already been bought. They could get a refund. As you can see, we refunded $139,223 to tickets to people who had already purchased their ticket. We had people who deferred their tickets to 2021, and that resulted in $310,896 that had already come into the organization, and we are going to have to make that up. This is a revenue that must be replaced in 2021. We also came up with a festival hero campaign urging people to give back their festival ticket or to donate cash money to us. And if you can, and we ended up with $91,597. We continue to get a small amount almost every week with that campaign because we've not taken it down. And we talk about should we, because we are going to do some things with those people who did that. But we had to take that down when we still see money coming in. The other thing that we were able to accomplish on festival weekend, we really worried and we started getting a lot of comments from our people who come to the festival each year, how they were going to miss it and everything. So we came up with the plan to have a virtual weekend. We were able to secure sponsors to pay for all of this, or we wouldn't have been able to do that. But we wanted to do something even though we weren't celebrating the 20th anniversary. Over those four days, because it started on Thursday with our Farm and Fun Time. So on Thursday, we did a Farm and Fun Time show. On Friday, we did music. On Saturday, we did music. And on Sunday, we conducted our Second Annual Bristol Session Super Festival. And if you can look at that, we had a total online viewership for that weekend of a little over 75,000 people. And a number that isn't on here, VTES also provided the virtual weekend live on their station all weekend. We've been working very hard on how do we recover from the cancellation since the beginning. We've identified areas where we can cut our budget and look at all the expenses that we have. At the same time, we're looking at new and exciting new revenue streams that we hope to be offering soon that will bring in additional money. We put out an RFP this year to price compare our stage lighting and sound needs. We've talked about this for several years because we want to make sure that we are getting the best deal, even though we were getting great service from our provider. And we're in the midst of that right now, and we are taking in questions. We're going to be doing walkthroughs in the next few weeks, and we will award that in the 1st of January. We also completed a new ticketing system from RFP that we did. The company that we used to go with merged with another company and decided that they weren't going to offer tickets anymore. We think that we've come up with a really good solution for that or because this ticket provider that we have now is able to provide to our patrons options that they never had before, a much better and longer payment plan, et cetera. And on Friday of this week, which is Black Friday, festival tickets for, festival tickets for the 2021 festival go on sale at the museum and online. And if you haven't gotten your festival ticket yet or thinking about what can you give someone for Christmas, that would make a great Christmas present. One of the other things that we did, our festival goers and our tickets were really trending toward being a record year for us. And I think it was because of our lineup. People were very excited about that. And one of the things that we did when we canceled was guarantee our people that had bought tickets that we were going to work very hard to bring those same bands back, and we were on target to make that happen. Now we'll talk about Radio Bristol update. I might have missed some of my slides. Okay. When the pandemic hit, we were on, on target to take our PBS syndic, our show Farm and Fun Time to PBS. We were finishing up the first Simpson of it. It's on Blue Ridge PBS, and it was recently picked up at East Tennessee PBS. And it's on all of North Carolina, the entire state of North Carolina's PBS stations. We're working with Kentucky and West Virginia PBS to hopefully have that on there too. But we feel like in the next two years, we will have nationwide syndication. That's what we're working for. And that, you know, we've had, we had someone from, as a matter of fact, we announced a artist. It's been way, several months ago, maybe even close to a year, and somebody was watching, followed us, came from Australia to that Farm and Fun Time show. Gee, okay. Another thing that Radio Bristol, one of our premier programs, we have 26 different radio programs, but our Farm and Fun Time noon show averages about 17,000 online listeners per week. Another thing that was exciting for us, about a month or so ago, we got notice from Americans UK's top 10 list that radio, our Radio Bristol Americana station was voted number one in the UK. So that was pretty exciting for us. And that just shows you the reach that we have via the web. I know that this doesn't really have anything to do with our museum and stuff, but I wanted to talk a little bit about this gentleman. It's Dallas Wayne, and he's an Austin, Texas-based singer-songwriter that recently moved to Bristol. And he came here because of the Birthplace of Country Music. I probably started talking to him six months out before he found a house. When he came here, we, I helped him, but the, the big thing about him, he has two shows on Sirius XM. He has went on Willie's Road Hasid show that's on there from Monday through Friday, and Outload Country from Tuesday through Friday. And the thing that he does every day on his shows, he tells people that he's coming live to them from Bristol daily. And I got an email the other day asking somebody, does Dallas Wayne have a studio in Bristol now? And it was some of them from around here. So I think that's another arm of promotion that brings people to Bristol. Now let's talk about the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. You know, when Ralph Peer, when the Ralph Peer series on country music came out and before, and it came out before COVID, we were seeing a huge increase in our attendance at the museum. I'm doing this so you can hear me, Jean. Okay? But once, once the pandemic hit, everything stopped. We had to close the museum. But one of the things that we worked on from the very beginning, we created lots of content that allowed our community and fans to connect with us. And we did most of this stuff in-house. We did videos that explored core exhibits and fun at-home activities, such as Benjo Bingo and different things that we do when we have kids come in. We created activity pages for parents or teachers to print off for their students. We continued our book club on the radio that we partnership with the Bristol Public Library. It's held monthly. We did some virtual programming. We had just opened up our special exhibit from the Virginia Folk Life Program. And so we did virtual programming. They took us, people behind the scenes to look at this exhibit, and we did five episodes of that. We also brought, called out to our artists that played the festival and that are friends of ours to submit videos for our fans. We put them up on Facebook and got a lot of coverage from them. We also brought out, I don't know if you've ever seen our golf cart karaoke that we do during the festival, but it's Charlene Baker on her, on a golf cart, just getting different artists to sing with or just any song. And not one of their songs. It could be just any song. And that always gets a lot of coverage. One of the things that we were also able to do during our downtime, the Smithsonian sent us education guides that we shared with the YMCA, the YWCA Girls Incorporated, and the Virginia Middle School After School Program. And we also provided it to several homeschool groups. We also created videos that gave students a back, a back behind the scene look at our museum and our core exhibits. And that's Renee Rogers, our curator at the museum. Oh, go back. Wait, I can go back. Wait. Okay. Am I going, am I going backwards? Okay. So can you get me back to where I need to be? I'm challenged when it comes to these things. Okay. During our shutdown, I want to talk about the things we did when we were planning. As soon as we shut down, we started planning for what would happen when we reopen. We created our COVID-19 response plan to outline plans and protocols to reopen the museum. We also were able to take care of some operational updated dates that were needed by the museum that we can't normally do during, when we're open, such as painting and doing things like that. We developed reopening procedures to ensure that we could run a museum that was safe, yet still educational and fun. Is this the video? Okay. I'm going to show a short video.
The museum reopens. You're going to notice a few changes as we work to make sure all of our staff, volunteers, and visitors stay safe. With online ticketing, you can buy your tickets before you come to our door. Every member of our staff will wear a mask. And you'll have more space to take in our amazing exhibits as we limit entries and practice social distancing. We are also implementing an arrangement and cleaning schedule in all public areas, and our interactive displays will be disinfected if we need shoes. We'll even give you your own bottle of hand sanitizer. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for coming to see us during this very challenging year. Your support means everything to us, and we are so glad to welcome you back.
As you can see right here, this is a map that shows where our visitors have come from since we opened. And we've had some good days, but we've had some very slow days. But we've been pleasant and really surprised, especially on weekends. Some other things that's happened since we reopened, we received a Smithsonian poster exhibit on women's suffrage poster, posters, and we have that up in our museum. We opened our new special exhibit, a honky-tonk exhibit. We worked with Hard Rock to get some memorabilia for it that complemented that, and we also have some of their memorabilia upstairs. Top challenges we are facing in, in the coming year, we don't expect to get any school groups before fall of 2020, 2021 at the earliest. Right now, we have no group tours on our books, but we do have some that have inquired about coming later in the year, maybe September or October. Museum visitation is down 62% since reopening in comparison to June of 2019. With operation revenues down, BMC has to look towards our financial building blocks to help us survive and sustain. Those building blocks are our 1927 Society. This is an individual giving, annual giving membership that people give. And we've since seen tremendous growth in that in the past two years. And another thing that is really rewarding to us is to see the number of people that are renewing each year. We also have a Bristol Sessions Leadership Circle. These are businesses who support us on an annual basis, and we will really focus on that in 20 and 21. We did put together a grants and grants task force and have been really proactive and aggressive tact, tact toward searching for, selecting, and applying for grants. A couple of the grants that we've gotten in the, in recent weeks or months is we got a grant for COVID-related expenses from the CDBG on the Bristol, Tennessee side that allowed us to buy supplies for reopening. We also got a grant from, on festival security that we're really excited about because that is a very important aspect of our festival. It's going to allow us to order some additional fencing and things that are needed to help pay for some of our paid security. And we hope to work with the city of Bristol, Virginia, because we will need a place to store that. As you know, we don't have any. So we are hoping that that's something that we can partner together on. And when maybe you're having activities in the park, Cumberland Park, because we'd like to see that used more, that you have that readily available and it won't have to be rented. We also received one for recovery support, and so, and we're still working. We have a grant task force meeting every month to talk about what's available and who's going to write those grants. But although we continue to make our case to our cities and other governing entities, we still need your help so that we can help others in our community. Because I feel like our visitorship and the things we do really adds to the economy. So when you start talking about budget for your next fiscal year, I hope that you include us in the. us in those talks. And our second building block is our Bristol Sessions Super Raffle. We had our annual raffle, uh, that's our latest building block towards our funding needs. We had our first one last year, and this was our second year, and we were a little worried because we had two less weeks to sell tickets, and, uh, also we had a pandemic to deal with, uh, and we didn't have a festival to sell them at. But that raffle, uh, sold out. It sold out on Friday of what would have been our festival. We had ticket holders from 41 states, the District of Columbia, and we had some tickets purchased on a US Army base in Europe. Uh, most of the winners were from our region, which is always nice. And with all of those, oh, there were only four winners that weren't from Tennessee or Virginia. What's next for BCM? We're going to fox, focus on maximizing all opportunities in our financial building blocks. We hope to increase the number of, uh, members in the 27th Society. We hope to, uh, have more business join our leadership circle. We will increase the number of grants we apply for in 2021. We will work with local, state, and federal government to find more support, and we'll host our Bristol Sessions Super Raffle in 2021. Additionally, we are focused on offering more education opportunity to our schools and community. Once travel fully reopens, it, we will increase our marketing efforts to drive more traffic to the museum in Bristol. And we, it's not that we're stopping marketing, we're just not putting as much effort into that with all the restriction. We are still planning to have our 2020 Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion and celebrate our 20th anniversary, and we hope to expand Farm and Fun Time to additional PBS markets. Thank you for letting me present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Does anybody have any questions?
Got a couple. Can you back up to that previous slide?
Oh, I'll try. Okay.
Yeah, so for everyone's knowledge, what, can you tell us, uh, on the society membership, what, you know, what that means, uh, what the fee is, that kind of stuff, a little bit more detail?
You know, we've made it, uh, what we believe almost affordable to anyone that wanted to become a member of it. It starts at $250, and then it goes up from there. I mean, we have people that give us $25,000 a year, but I would say the majority of them range in the 250 to $5,000 range. They get certain things from that, like a museum membership and, and things like that. Um, and depending on your level, it comes with different things. And but the good thing about it, if someone wants to join, they can pay it all upfront, they can pay it quarterly, or they can pay it monthly. So we do have a payment plan for that.
And when you say, uh, museum membership, does that mean they can visit the museum every so often, or what does that actually mean?
They get a membership card that they can come at any time.
All right, and the businesses that join, um, to support you, right? How do you, how do you market that? How do you get the word out to all the, what is it, 7,000 or 8,000 businesses we have in the city?
You know what? We, we call and try to schedule meetings. Um, we, um, um, that's mainly how we reach out to them, to try to make that first contact with them. We also have some members on our board that introduce us to certain businesses and ask them to speak to us.
Okay, so I don't think a lot of businesses are getting that word, so just, that's an opportunity for them?
That is exactly correct. That's our go this year.
The raffles. You can do, you can do a lot with the raffles. I think that's a really good idea. Get creative with that, especially with the stuff coming up in the city for the next 24 to 36 months with, you know, Hard Rock and, you know, people probably wanting to think about coming here for various reasons. So you could really get a lot of mileage, I think, out of that raffle if you really think about it.
Yeah.
So I would, I would encourage you and the board to really, really look at that hard. Maybe do it more often, try different things, because that could really get, uh, a lot of funds flowing, a lot of people excited about.
You know, we have, we started, um, working, I wouldn't say working, but communicating with Hard Rock almost as soon as they announced. We've, uh, provided them with some information, provided them with, uh, and I think they'll be a great partner for our community.
I'm encouraged. I'm glad to see that you've got, uh, some bullets there that are very much, um, initiatives that you're trying to take the bull by the horn, so to speak, and trying to drive your own outcome.
You know what? We have no other choice.
I know, but, but the reason I say that is, is organizations, when you, the silver lining in the cloud, when you get, or, when you get times like this where times are tough, forces organizations to do this, which you should be doing that all the time, but unfortunately, most of them don't do it until, you know, they kind of have to. But when you do this, you really see that there are a lot of ways that you can get some mileage out of, you know, different things you haven't tried. So, so I encourage you, don't stop with this list here, right? Because, you know, you really can create some ideas that, uh, that you haven't thought of, and I think this is a very good start.
And we offer, we, we're welcome any ideas that someone might have to throw our way, too. But we have a pretty creative staff, and we're working hard.
So I'll just say a couple of things. First thing I'll say, I listen to, uh, I listen to Channel 59 on Sirius just about every day, and I hear Dallas Wayne mention Bristol. And, uh, I appreciate it a lot, uh, that he does that. And it's the first time I heard him do it, it was kind of cool, because I don't usually catch the start of a show. The other thing I was going to say is, I think you're doing a really good job with, with Radio Bristol being syndicated onto PBS. I think there's been some kind of exponential, uh, it's shown exponential growth. And I think that the more of that that we see in the next couple of years, that's, that's a very effective marketing tool for us. I mean, when you were talking about the amount of viewership that it has, the first thing I thought of was like Austin City Limits, you know, kind of a similar, kind of a similar
I will tell you that, um, is it North Carolina? Oh, North Carolina PBS, Farm and Fun Time, comes right on before Austin City Limits.
Does it really? Well, I think it, I think it's excellent what you're doing, and I think you're doing a very good job. And I know that, um, you know, I'm on the Rhythm and Roots Board with you, and, uh, and I know you've done a lot of, uh, there's been a lot of worrying and a lot of fret, you know, about, uh, about what happened with the festival this year, and you all are doing a very good job, uh, with, with the limited resources you have. And, uh, and especially even just as an example, talking about changing the ticketing company, that was a, that was a big decision, and that was, that was a hard decision to make, and you are doing a very good job with that, with that as well.
You know, we held out as long as we could, and, uh, it wasn't a decision that we took lightly, and, uh, it wasn't a decision that we made on our own. I mean, we talked to our city managers, we talked to health departments, and, and it was the only decision to make.
And I know there were, there were strong feelings both ways on it, and I believe
There was.
We probably, we probably discussed it, if I recall, but, um, but I appreciate, you know, everything you're doing with Rhythm Roots as well, as well as the museum itself.
You know, we love this city, and we believe in this city, and we want to be a part of it.
Here's one other thing I thought about, too, idea-wise. Um, because, because the referendum passed, the casino, and you got Hard Rock behind that whole initiative, um, I think it's, it's worth a discussion because their, their market audience, right, that's going to want to come to this community is the market audience that your great Radio Bristol could potentially reach out to, right? So I know your Radio Bristol only has certain mile covered, I can't remember the footprint,
It, it doesn't have a very
I know, but you were trying to, uh, you were trying to upgrade the power output, right?
Yes.
To get a bigger footprint. So that might be a win-win, right? If you talk to someone that needs that advertising footprint from the local, you know, Country Music Museum, which has credibility for the whole theme of the music, right? To talk to them about how can you partner up, right, to get maybe some capitalization to help promote the power you need, and then promote their business, right?
You know, the
Which they're going to have to buy that advertising anyway. They're going to have to do a lot of promotions, so that might be a win-win that you talk to them about.
The challenge that we have is that we are a nonprofit radio, and we cannot sell advertising per se. We can sell underwriting. But in that underwriting, we cannot, uh, do anything that, um, is in an advertisement way. We couldn't say, come to this, or do this, or do that, or, or they've got a deal going on right now. And we can only say that it is brought to you by a certain company. That's, that's the challenge that you have with a nonprofit.
You'll have to figure out how to work the, the legality of it, but, you know, if, if they gave, you know, if they gave a substantial, you know, amount of gifted money, right, to set up a larger footprint for your radio, you could all, always be saying, this comes to you by the special support and promotion of,
Right.
You know, who gives us this footprint from the, you know, power we need.
Exactly.
You know, so there's ways
That's how you have to say it.
Yeah, so there's ways of doing it. I'm just saying, if you talk through that, I think you'll find there's a win-win there that might, um, you know, add something to your bullet list there that'll help you guys.
Thank you.
Any, any more questions? Lee, I appreciate you coming.
Well, I thank you all for letting me present.
And I'd just like to say, I mean, I appreciate everything the museum's doing, like a lot of organizations, uh, kind of was discussed, you're having to pivot a little bit, you're having to focus.
No, we all are. We all are.
I know, but, but I think what, in that pivot and focus, what you're doing is really positioning yourself very well. I can see a lot of good things on the horizon, hope, you know, once, uh, all this gets behind us, that, you know, talking about Farm and Fun Time, the radio, the, the museum. And, uh, so I appreciate all of the work that you and the rest of the staff and the volunteers and the board have been doing. It, I know it's been challenging. I know, uh, as Neil alluded to, some of those discussions have been very hard, very frank. But I think on the backside of this, you'll, you'll emerge, uh, stronger and more committed, uh, to carrying out your mission.
Okay.
I hope so, anyway, but I'm pretty confident you will.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Harley.
All right. Move to item E, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 20 dash 7 to amend section 66 dash 41 of the City Code of Ordnances Holidays. Staff report?
Uh, counsel, as previously mentioned in the public hearing, um, it's been, uh, the history here in the city of Bristol that Commonwealth of Virginia has a different holiday schedule than the city of Bristol has experienced, and it would just be wise for us to follow the Commonwealth of Virginia's holiday schedule. Uh, that way, if there's a conflict, um, there shouldn't be a conflict in the future going forward if we follow their holiday schedule, because as it stands right now, there are courthouse employees that get off and other state employees that are off, and inevitably, I'm asking counsel if the employees can have that day off as well as it is a state holiday. So this just streams lines, streams, streamlines that process.
Okay. Uh, any public comment? I know we had the public hearing, but, uh, is there any, anybody else that'd like to make a comment? Hearing none. Uh, let's see. Do I have a, um, motion to, uh, for first reading of the ordinance?
All right, Mr. Mayor, bear with me.
Okay.
So, um, I'm going to move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only with the following changes. Uh, relabel the paragraphs as paragraph A, B, C, D, and E, and under paragraph A, strike language in items J and K referring to Fourth Thursday and Fourth Friday.
I did.
And that's my caption only, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have any, uh, counsel discussion?
I'll just say very briefly, I think it's good that, you know, we're finally going to move to, you know, the state, state schedule for this, because I know we very frequently get emails from the city manager, hey, the state has this day off, the courthouse has this day off, can we give our employees this day off? And I think it's very good, uh, that we're going to do that, um, as well as recognizing some holidays that we don't traditionally recognize in the city, like Juneteenth. I think that's a step forward for us overall. And as, as well as being able to give a lot of our employees time off specifically on Election Day, uh, because I think Election Day should be a holiday. It should, everyone should have the opportunity to be able to vote. So, uh, I think this is a, I think this is a good change for us.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend the City Code of Bristol, Virginia, section 66 hyphen 41 Holidays.
All right. Item number F, ordinance is second reading, F1, ordinance 20 dash 5 to amend the Charter of the City of Bristol, Virginia. Staff report?
Uh, counsel, before you, you have, um, an ordinance to amend, uh, several sections of the charter. Uh, this is, we have gone over this at a public hearing and at a previous council meeting, so there are numerous changes throughout the city charter that needed to be addressed, and I think we have addressed the most pressing ones at the moment.
Okay. Any, uh, public comment? The one that's signed up? All right. Do I have a motion for the, uh, second reading, caption only?
Uh, I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
All right. Have a motion, Councilman Osborne, second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
An ordinance to request a charter change to the charter for the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Do I have a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
F2, ordinance 20 dash 4 to amend chapter 50, article 1 and 2 of the City Code. Staff report? Ms. Morgan?
I just want to make a quick, couple comments, real quick. Of course, this is the second reading, um, and normally, um, we've written in the ordinance set at the effect of January 1st, which would be more than the 30 days. So I just want to make you aware of that. As well, um, there was in the original draft, an appendix A and B, which were really the same information that's in Division 3, the list of land uses. It was just in a different format, in a landscape format, and which would be probably pretty hard to do with Munich code as well. But, so I'm asking that the references to appendix A and B that are on page nine and page 12 just be struck, because that will not be part of the ordinance. We will use that. Um, but it's already in the ordinance, it's already in Division 3, just in the different format. So if that can be done, second reading.
Will you repeat where they were?
The references are on page nine and 12. And it's, uh, on page nine, it's appendix A and page, it's just, they were referring to an appendix, and the appendix wasn't in the first reading.
Okay.
It doesn't change anything at all. It's already, it's just a different format of how those charts were done.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Uh, again, any, any public comment? Anyone? No one signed up, but. All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion for second reading?
Uh, I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only with the exception of striking the references to appendix A on page nine and appendix B on page 12.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Um, I will, I will say, I appreciate the work that, uh, that you have done, uh, on this, Ms. Morgan. Uh, I know this has been a very long process, and it's, it's spanned basically, you know, my entire term on council. So you've been, you've been working on it for a very long time. And, uh, and I'll say thank you to you, and I'll say thank you to the Planning Commission and, uh, to their chairman, Mr. Pollard. I know of no better office in the city meant for him than the Planning Commission. He is, he is built for that, and he is, he is excellent at the details. So I appreciate the work that you do and the work that you've done, and the Planning Commission itself has done, so, so I thank you.
I'll just, I'll add to that. I appreciate, this has been a long process. It's been a good process. I mean, there's been a lot of work by the staff, uh, a lot of work by the Planning Commission, and a good job of getting input and feedback from the public as well. And so, um, it's good to finally, after many, many, many months, to finally be able to move forward and finish this out. But I do know that there's been a lot of work involved, and I'm very thankful for everyone along the way that did that. Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Win, Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance 20 hyphen 4, an ordinance to amend chapter 50, article 1 and 2 of the City Code of Ordnances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, that existing chapter 50, article 1 and 2 be removed and replaced with a new chapter 50, article 1 and 2 is contained below. chapter 50, article 1 and 2 as contained below.
All right. Do I have a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
I move for the adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda.
Are you going to ask us?
Oh, well, what's the pleasure of counsel?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Being no further business, we stand adjourned.